Thank you. I'm Bob Baker. I'm also a attorney. So on the range, but I was.
Well, thank you, David. It's good to see some of our new employees and some of our new employees that been here. Quite a number of months. So welcome, welcome, everybody. I do hope that you enjoy your time here and appreciate the work that y'all are doing. Linda?
No.
Oh. Welcome. All right. Well, we do appreciate you coming and introducing. So.
Thank you, everyone.
So item number three, identify future work meeting topics.
I would like us to have a discussion.
They're gonna do it quietly.
I'd like to have a discussion on the the city and northern township project with the northern shore of the lake and having get kind of more up to speed on what's going on with that and kind of bring us to the table to find out. You know, what is actually going to happen with regard to the county? Are we going to have constant closure that way or what's what the scoop is on that? I know that there's been some stuff coming. I'm on this if you have one in Florida. And there was a request for a letter of support, actually kind of basically made it sound like we had already given our support to it, which I don't believe we have. I know we talked about when we had the joint city county meeting. But I think that that's something that we should be talking about probably sooner than later.
Mr. Chair, one thing, I'm curious. Do we not have a vacancy on the planning commission? If we don't, we should, and I think we should fill that seat.
Why do we have a vacancy?
I think that we had an understanding that that if Vinnie was as part of moving over to the jail steering committee, he was gonna resign from all of his other appointments. That was, yeah, we appointed him the first meeting that I that I attended as a commissioner. And I believe he was supposed to have stepped down by now because the jail committee is meeting. And so I think we need to fill that vacancy. Or identify it as a vacancy and then fill it.
Is that something that we would need to do at a future work meeting or?
Well, we would have to have someone to appoint. So, yeah.
How soon? I mean, I guess, kind of curious to know if he did submit his his resignation from from the planning.
I don't believe that he has yet. Yeah. Initially, you think maybe you would even brought that up, Mr. Chair, at one point, but the the issue was that the fire commission hadn't even started meeting yet. So there was no point for him to step down yet because there, you know, nothing had started. In all reality, I think it's really questionable whether it has anything to do with his amount of time for it, but it's it is something that he agreed he would do if needed to, you know, to step down. Finding Commission meets in the evening on Mondays. The steering committee meets in the middle of the day on Wednesdays. So it's not like it directly conflicts with the steering committee commitment. But it is something he said he would do if needed. So not sure what the proper procedure is.
And it is voluntary. I mean, he said he was gonna do it. So.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, us as a board, we do have you know, I believe we do have that authority to
Yeah.
follow through with 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 our appointments to to boards and committees. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna mention tomorrow at our jail steering committee meeting, which you and I will be attending along with Commissioner Anderson. We can bring this up with Mr. Vinnie and see how he wants to move forward and then update the board accordingly.
Thank you.
And if there's something, Mr. Chair, if there's something that the history of because that is the at-large position. That would mean that we would probably have to agree on who we're going to appoint for that.
Yeah, I think from my recollection, it was it was advertised. And then it's something that the entire board did agree on.
And that's that could be put in the paper as well. We're working on the news.
Yeah, great idea.
Commissioner Anderson? No. No future worked out?
I'm good. Thanks, Tim.
All right. So with that being said, I do believe we do have to work future meeting topics. So bring us to the short-term rental ordinance. Brent?
Thank you, commissioners. The before I start on that, I will I will just say that everything you guys just said about the planning commission appointment, everything is all accurate. He was appointed at an at-large position. So the way the bylaws are right now for the planning commission, he would have to resign or the board would have to remove him. So those are the kind of the two ways that he would be off there. And we can move forward with whatever option is reasonable and best. So we have a short-term rental ordinance discussion here. It's intended to be kind of the first reading of the ordinance, but I'll give you a quick, quick kind of background. How we got here. The currently, there's no restrictions enforced for this type of activity. And we've been getting a lot of complaints recently about this. Rentals haven't historically been considered anything other than normal residential use. So these are kind of the examples, but the recent trends are that this type of use is increasing. And the VRBO commercial website showed that there's, you know, anywhere between forty forty-six VRBOs in Beltrami County that I've seen when I've when we've looked. Some quick background information. We talked about this at the last meeting we had when we talked about charter rentals, some pros and cons of them. You know, there's there's good and bad, right? With everything. Nothing, you know, really on the ordinary there or crazy there. We talked about this their last meeting. This is just kind of a reminder of how our neighbors address this. Hubbard is still working on rules and there sounds like they're close to adopting something last I heard. Clearwater and Cass don't have regulations in place. Clearwater doesn't intend to do anything in the near future. They don't have the VRBOs. You know, Cass has been trying to avoid doing anything for as long as possible. And conversations I've had with Cass is the one maybe big difference between Cass and Beltrami is that where most of these VRBOs exist in Cass County are places that already experienced large numbers of people with lots of gatherings. And that's kind of the expectation that the lake. Here there's maybe a little bit more of an expectation of decent privacy in that Northwoods, you know, getaway. Kucha Ching and Lake of the Woods both require conditional use permits. And then the Greater Bemidji area joint planning board just adopted their ordinance in two thousand twenty-one this fall. And they have a licensing program and interim use permits. Here's some other ones that are somewhat similar counties to Beltrami, Aiken and Crowing. Crowing has an annual license required, but they've decided where they are allowed, where they're not. And then Aiken regulates everything with an interim use permit that's good for five years. The planning commission reviews all of them and their initial permits and renewals and stuff. And so that was kind of our, what we what we looked at. This is kind of a outline of kind of how we got to this point today, creating an ordinance. It really started with citizen complaints to environmental service department and to the county board. The county board, we had a conversation at the second meeting in July, I believe it was, or one of the July meetings. And as a result of that meeting, the board indicated the desire to have something to consider. Probably, you know, nobody wants to create rules where they're not necessary, but there was enough complaints and enough problems being created that maybe something does need to be looked at. We had a couple of planning commission working meetings where we went over a long list of potential issues and topics and things. At a public hearing in October, continuously gathered more feedback and listening to concerns and ideas. Planning Commission reviewed the draft ordinance in November. They didn't meet in December. So the January meeting of the planning commission, they approved a resolution of support for the draft ordinance to the county board. Here we are today. The bottom two are just the possible next steps. So if you're in so inclined, we'd schedule a public hearing at a county board meeting. And after that would be like any borders. Here's kind of a list of, this is from the slideshow that I did in July for you. But this was a list of concerns that were identified by a large group of people about vacation homes and home rentals. And these are, this is a list, one of the lists that we looked at when we were considering our ordinance. Kind of goes the gamut from taxes and licensing and building code and all the way down to like parking and signage and things like that. So kind of runs the gamut. So I'm gonna kind of jump right into the short-term rental ordinance as it was drafted and recommended for approval to the board. I'll start out by saying it's a seven-page ordinance without having ridiculously small font. It's normal font. So it's not a book. It's fairly short, trying to cover the scenarios that we felt needed to be covered. First is the definition of a short-term rental. It's thirty days or less and not a resort, B and B or hotel or something like that that already exists and is legal. They decided, we decided as a group to create three different classes of short-term rentals with different levels of regulation. There's the simple, small ones that are low risk. There's low risk. When I say low risk, it's it's really the risk of becoming a problem or becoming complaint ridden. The type A is the small ones, up to three bedrooms and up to eight people. Generally speaking, those aren't the ones that we've heard of. The type B is in the middle and the type C is the big ones. So there'd be different levels of regulations for each of those. The permit lengths would be different for each of those as well. The type A and B, both of those would have a temporary permit that would be good for one year for the first time. And I'll tell, show you the quick background. The reason for that was the planning commission felt that it would be good to to impress upon these owners of the short-term rentals, how important it is that they run a good ship, that they they control the problems before they happen. And that they have to renew their permits. So they're gonna be more inclined to do that. And then after that first renewal or first year, the type A permits, they won't expire until they're either revoked by by them doing something wrong and having all sorts of problems. Or if they sell it because these permits aren't transferable to different people. So the type B permit would be for one year and then valid for eight years after that. And then they would go through a real process. And then the large ones would have varying lengths potentially of of terms of the permit being invalid for. But that would be determined by the planning commission based on the the conditions that are specific to that. If it's a monster place or just barely over the thirteen, they might have different lengths of time. And we did create an exemption. There were a few people that were concerned about these. And so we we all agreed that these were like really low risk. So owner occupied structures of one room and up to three guests per night, somewhere like what you'd think of with an Airbnb and provided that the owner is on site. If the owner is on site, we're probably not gonna have problems with any of these. So we're not even gonna require a permit or anything from them. Unless they're big again. But the existing short-term rental units have to apply within ninety days of adoption of the ordinance. And terms of non-transferable. I wasn't sure quite how to address the fees, to be honest with you, because we don't, we normally do the county board fee schedule. And so what came first, the chicken or the egg type of deal? We just threw the fees in here with the anticipation that we would probably go to revise the county fee schedule at some point and pull these out of this. But those are the fees that they recommended. And some some points here is they're required to have a manager or responsible person able to respond to the site within thirty forty minutes, twenty-four hours a day, seventies. So if there's a problem, there has to be somebody reasonably close by. And then there's compliance septic system requirements and some solid waste requirements that are fairly minimal, fairly common sense and straightforward. But we're gonna, we're gonna start running these as commercial operations that we need to have some sort of. The occupancy highlights how how we kind of went through this a bunch of different ways of how we settled was that septic sizing is gonna determine the maximum occupancy. It basically takes the design flow of your septic system and looks at dividing that by seventy-five gallons per day. That's what a average person uses in the septic design world. And so really, you're taking your design flow by seventy-five and you're getting the number of people that would be allowed per septic code. And then we're adding one extra person on there as a maximizing their water use. So they don't live there. They're not gonna be washing all their clothes and stuff all the time. So that's how that was determined. And then we just have a provision that they can't advertise for more than the maximum that they're allowed to have. Logical, but say that. And then one short-term rental unit per parcel would be potentially permitted in the shoreline zone. So we don't create a scenario where we just felt like the risk goes up the more units you have in close proximity. Because then you'll have different groups renting different units and parties running back as far as going on. And there's just more likelihood of noise complaints. The, I'll just give you a kind of a background on the why in the shoreline zone is because there are some in the non-shoreland, they're not on lakes, that do already exist and have, or at least one, that has multiple units that they rent out. And we kind of talked about that one scenario and said, you know, in the non-shoreland, they maybe they own some acreage. It's probably not something I've never heard about it before. So obviously, it's not something that generates complaints now. And it probably won't do in the future. There's some things like quiet hours, parking required off-street for all the vehicles. That's one of the complaints that we've been having is blocking roads and lots of instructions. They can't use RVs or fish houses for lodging.
Brendan, one other thing about that shoreline zone is because if it was more than one on adjacent parcels, essentially becomes a resort at that point.
Correct. Yeah, we would, we would have a different way of allowing those. We would just have them.
Still do it, but they'd have to file and be an actual resort.
Good point. Yeah, that was, I was gonna ask that. So thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, they would just apply for a conditional use permit to be a resort and go from a totally different perspective. Right, yeah. And then we added something about pets, just keep them on the property. And then no special events are allowed. So that's one of the big complaints about these statewide is with people rent out a big, huge lake home, and then they invite three of their friends and have their daughter's wedding. So we think this would still theoretically potentially be allowed on a on a lake property. But that's a different use. That's, that should just require a conditional use permit to have a special event place. And and then they can go through those provisions. But if they have a smaller house and they're just gonna get a type B short-term rental permit from our office, they wouldn't be able to do special. And then this, the the last slide that I have is the owner and manager information, contact information. There's a requirement that S B posts on site outside. The idea there is that the neighbors will already have all that information. Our office will already have all that information. But if there is a noise complaint or a problem or something that happens and law enforcement's ever called out, that law enforcement would have a reasonable expectation to just say, you know, when they go up to knock on the door or whatever, like, oh, hey, here's the owner's manager. This is the rental. I should call them and get them involved because they're gonna take care of this. I don't have to. That's the idea there. And then there's a provision allowed for variances if it's necessary. The planning commission thought that that would be a wise thing to do since we're creating a brand-new ordinance where we know we're not gonna be able to cover all the scenarios that might pop up. So like the thing that may may get used. And then the last thing is if there's any appeals to any administrative decisions of this ordinance, it would go to the Board of Adjustment, similar to what our Charlotte ordinance says. I went through that really fast. But it's short, the short ordinance and you know, it probably, it probably doesn't affect as many people in our county as all of our other ordinances do. It's it's gonna affect you know, forty-five homes, that maybe up to forty-five homes that we know of. But in all honesty, of those forty-five homes that we have on VRBO, there's a large percentage of those that are already in townships or in the city of Bemidji that regulate their own shoreline zoning. And they'll have a different way of dealing with this anyways. Hopefully I have time for questions if you have any. Or discussion.
So we're gonna go forward with what what I'm looking for is all the get the folks in here, right? Because you say it's a small number of people, but those people are some of them have been majorly impacted.
They've been invested in their property.
Yeah, and it's a, it's still a a point that I've made a couple of times is that going forward now, do you think Brent and everybody else up here, do you think that what we've put in here will have enough oversight, for lack of a better word, on somebody applying for a new one? So when you say conditional use permit, does that, that brings in all the neighbors, right? They all get to weigh in before you grant that conditional use permit. And it'll go back to the the planning and zoning board and get that input so that my house on a nice little lake north of of town, all of a sudden, I don't have one of these popping in if I get to weigh in on it.
Yeah, it's only for the largest ones, though. For the smallest, smaller ones that were determined to be less risk.
Right.
They would just get a permit from our office. So there would be no public hearing and no public notice. So the the neighbor wouldn't have that opportunity the way it's written now.
Okay, so. And how did we get to that point? I mean, because i- isn't it really establishing a commercial use of a property? It is a commercial use.
Commercial use, yeah.
So you're island zoning, you're taking a residential area and you're allowing an island zone to just plunk down in the middle. You know, when when people move into a residential district, they figure it's gonna be residential.
Yep.
And I've had a lot of background in planning and zoning and island zoning is not allowed.
Spot zoning, yeah.
Spot, I could, yeah, sorry. Island or spot zoning. It's not allowed. So again, I'm I'm putting myself in that place.
Sure.
Because I was my house was kind of put in that situation and it was unofficial. One of the neighbors had people out, he was in a business venture and he had somebody out virtually every night of the week. And they were staying up late at night. And it was more than one. It was two or three or four. And it was very disturbing. I mean, you could hear them from three or four houses away. So I think we gotta, this isn't carved in in granite yet. I think we have to address spot or island zoning considerations to protect even those smaller ones that we're saying, oh, we're gonna get, just give them that one. I liked what you said about owner occupied. Now, that's considered an Airbnb where the owner's usually there and they're making them breakfast or making them lunch or something. Now that I think that's kind of a no-brainer because you're gonna have somebody sitting there that owns the place and it's gonna, they're gonna be watching their own interests. But I know some personalities that that wouldn't work with very well either. So I just want to be sure and put one thing into your head and everybody else's, spot or island zoning. Because you're turning a property into a commercial use when your neighbors never thought there would be a commercial use of it.
That, that makes sense. Yeah.
I think, I don't want, I think you're you're right. I don't want to belabor it, but I think that we're not exactly changing the zoning of where those houses are, where it's it's now allowed use countywide would be how I would read it, you know. But but I I don't want to, I take, I take your point. This is a good, it's a good point.
It's allowing a commercial use of a structure because any commercial use of a structure is much different than a single-family residential use.
Right.
And we know that from zoning and planning.
It's like in the in the city, you can get you can have a in-home, like a residential business if it, and then there's a bunch of
Right, similar.
things that come around it. So it's not exactly
a commercial.
But it's, it gets pretty close.
Here's the question I have. Does the county have zoning for residential areas? I don't think we have any zoning at all.
We don't have a zoning map. How would we, so it's all the shoreline zone, more than on shoreline zone.
Right, that's why I'm questioning how we would do the, I agree that this is where the, I think the problem has kind of eroded. But is there any way that we can really control that? If we don't have something listed as residential, how can we say that we can do this, you know, that change it?
Well, the county, the county issues building permits. And the building permit states.
Does it state the residential or?
Yeah, we have a different fee for commercial permits and residential permits.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there's no zoning per se. There's, you know, most people look at their tax statements and see what their tax says, and they think about that as zoning, but there's never been a zoning map.
Right. And and the lack of that will cause us some problems here.
Correct.
I think.
Yep, no, I.
It will, it potentially will cause us some problems. David Hanson has something to say.
No doubt on the ordinance there is in building. That's a general.
Yep, and I would add that we already have that with a county-wide subdivision ordinance and a county-wide tower and wind conversion energy ordinance. We already have some county-wide zoning ordinances. This isn't any different. But I I hear what you're saying and I, you're, you're right. Yeah. Sure.
Thank you, David. Commissioner Ukich.
The the state of Minnesota in addressing county attorney. You're really good at legal stuff. I like to think I'm pretty good at zoning and that sort of thing. The state of Minnesota clearly has a residential code that you should need to comply with as long as you're in the state of Minnesota. And it's the, it's referred to as the one and two family dwelling unit. Whenever you exceed that, you are in a commercial property status. So they allow a single-family or duplex. As soon as you exceed a duplex, then you're kicked into a commercial situation by state of Minnesota statutes, building code. So I I don't want to go overboard either, David. But I do want some protection for those folks because everybody sitting in here, if it was happening in your side yard, it's different if you buy a house and it's next to a resort. That's your own doing. You bought the house on the Fourth of July. You know what you're gonna have next door. You're gonna have a lot of kids running around, bouncing on donuts in the water, splashing and jumping off of docks. But if you're in a residential setting and now all of a sudden we have allowed a commercial use of a property, I I do have a problem with that. And I think we need to protect folks and their single-family residents that way.
Yeah, I would just add the final thing. The way this ordinance is written, the the toughest thing is just gonna be enforcement.
Right, and that's what David's concerned. Right, and that's what David's concerns are.
Yeah.
And and the legal battles coming from it and a potential suing and this and that and the other thing. So let's not, let's not belabor that like Reed said. But would you just put that into the planning and zoning committee to to have them consider some wording, some something in there that that addresses a spot or island zone situation?
I think at this point, we should be deciding whether we want to go to a public hearing to instead of doing a one thing here and a one thing there, bring it to a public hearing or not, to say we're not going to do it or we're going to bring it to a public hearing and then have all of those things brought to the public hearing and then bring it back to planning commission to revamp it.
So you're not looking for input at this time?
I don't think I'm at the pleasure of the board.
We can, we can take the input, but I just think that we shouldn't be, you know, taking one issue and then have, you know, bring it back to the board and then go, you know, another.
No, I I, what I thought the board was going to do is give some input and say whether or not we want to include that information in the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Know what I mean?
Because you were saying to take it back to the
No, 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 no. We we just take this into the public hearing as input and everybody can throw in their two cents. Just like when we go to the public hearing, then someone's going to step to the podium and say, hey, what about this? What about that?
Do you have a favor of moving it to a public hearing?
Yes.
Adding this as a
And and that's how I was, and that's how I was going to close Craig by saying, I I say this is good. I like what I see here for the most part. I I think it's a, it's a good start. I hate to disagree with an attorney, but I'm going to disagree. I think I think it's a good place. We got to have something. And if we, if the public comes up and says this, they think this is too much, then we'll all take take that into consideration and figure out how we want to move forward. But I say, let's bring it to the public hearing. Give plenty of notice so that everybody can get here. And that's my.
Okay, so before we move on, I I believe Commissioner Anderson has a question and then and it sounds like that we will be scheduling a a public hearing sometime in the future.
Just real quick, with the new ordinance, is it automatically enforced on all people, even if they've already been established? How does that happen?
We wrote it in that way at the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
And we gave them a a window of time to to make your application and and I actually had a conversation just yesterday with a guy talking about, you know, some of the potential issues that might come with that or we've got something else to bring to the public hearing side of it saying, you know, if if it does get approved, we would want to add some provision in there that allows for septic compliance to to take some time to go through because if they have to apply within ninety days, they're going to need a window.
Right.
If something is not compliant, bring that in compliance.
Good, that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, does does staff have a recommended date for for having the public hearing and or should we decide on a date and then throw it in the pub, in the, in the consent agenda? Rather than making a new item because we have a lot to get through in the regular meetings, but
Yeah, I'm suggesting.
I was going to suggest a second meeting in March because the first meeting, we're having a joint meeting a a off campus. And so that'll give plenty of time for people to get together and and be able to come in.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that's the fifteenth.
Yep. First meeting in March is March.
Is the first, yeah, yeah. But six weeks.
I like that suggestion.
Yeah. Six weeks from today.
So public.
Anybody saying they didn't have enough time?
That exactly. I mean, it gives, it gives a lot of time for people to, on on either and whatever side of the issue they come from.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we are on to item five encroachment trespassing on tax corporate land. Pick.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
For the people at home, I'm Dick Moore, the Director of Natural Resources Management Department. Commissioner Olson always reminded me to say that. And anyway, I'm kind of, I'm very glad to be here today to be able to talk about a few of these things that have been coming across my board for my desk for over ten years. So with that, we'll try to keep moving here. It it made me sit down and talk with staff and figure out how many of these encroachments trespasses we've had and we kind of came up with twenty five. And we're sure we missed a couple, you know, they're not all structures and not all houses and not all lodges or hunting cabins, but we've got quite a few of encroachments going on. As you can see, we've got three encroachments with permanent structures have been resolved over the years. We have pending encroachments and you'll see that's a regular agenda on the, after, after this meeting. We've got four of those. And then just give you a quick synopsis. I know you have a chance to read this, but we have moved three buildings or houses. We have three trends, three fence trespasses that we've taken care of. You know, we have one trespass pending on the fences. We removed a couple outhouses. We moved about three hunting cabins. We've got five hunting cabins slash structures pending and one gate trespass we removed.
What was the timeframe for the all of that?
Well, I've been here since twenty eleven.
Going, okay, thank you, thank you.
My eleven year anniversary today and I got to come in front of the county board.
Better way.
How can you beat that?
Twice.
The reason we're running into some of these and I've got Kevin and Brew, or Kevin and Brent here to help answer some questions if they come up later in the presentation, but we have had remonumentation going on for years, as you know, and it gives a more accurate, precise section corner location. And the GIS department remaps after the money pay, remonumentation occurs and it makes the parcel maps more precise. Higher resolution photography, you guys have all seen that. It's amazing what what it looks like today compared to a decade or two ago. And then naturally raise a question from landowners, realtors, appraisers, banks, title companies, everybody else that looks at, looks at the photography now. So I kind of wanted to hit you with this, just so you do realize how many of these we deal with and what I've what we've had over the years. And like I say, started out kind of slow, you get one, then next thing a couple of years later you get two. So it's kind of grown a little bit, but just to kind of refresh your memory, and these are ones that we have resolved. Julson, and I should let you know what's kind of frustrating on these is the amount of acreage that these these individuals have. This individual had over two hundred acres to build on and yet he encroached on us. And as you can see, we, the survey there, the house, the garage, they've got things right there that were, well, the house is a big thing. That's their half the houses on on us. And none of these were ever surveyed because that's one of the steps I take is to ask if they've had any documentation on their property brownies or anything and not a single one has been surveyed. So that's one we've dealt with. And then Elvester was another one. And as you can see there, they had a trailer house and other other outbuildings and such on our property. And he has over, excuse me, he had eighty acres to build on. And he built there. I kind of wish I would have done a little more research on that one before we did this and they've got that many acres to build on, but yet they're trespassing on us. Of course, it's to be closer to a lake, be closer to a natural feature that they want to be close to. And you can see there he's got, and you've got it on your packets, couple buildings, couple outhouses, septic or well and such. And then the last one we took care of just last year was gross. And they've got over hundreds of acres and they've got a barn with a permanent structure on it. I give thirty three feet around each permanent structure is all we do on that. If it's a temporary structure, you can see at a fence there, a corral, we're not going to go around something that can be moved like that. So that got resolved. And then one that's kind of pending right now is emblem, and this is the one that he only had a few acres, five acres to build on, but you can tell he wanted to be near the the river. And so part of his house is on it, part of the deck, he's got septic tanks on us. And this has gone through every process except going to the county board to approve, going to the legislature to be sold privately. So that'll be a discussion in the next month with a couple meetings there. Then we've got another one coming up, which is the one that kind of, we talked about last time and we thought we'd table it and again, we'll be talking about that in an hour or so. The Landsburg one where they've got part of the house, garage, everything on that. So so anyway, just to give you a little idea of what we've removed, I wanted to kind of show you what we run into. Here's a newly found one. We haven't had a chance to really even pay attention to it yet or to find out how serious it is or what exactly it entails, but that's something on our our list. But just to show you, we had one here that you can see they had a trailer house, they had an outbuilding and everything. And they really did this, they just did decide to move it, which kind of resolved things very nicely and it was good, good to have that occur. Hunting cabin removed, we got that moved, we got that moved. We don't know if that's hunting shack and or deer stand, but either way, it's a pretty pretty permanent thing on the strict, around the landscape. Here was a hunting shack we found, we got that removed. Here was one we stumbled onto, we got that removed. And then we've got some here that are pending removal. Here's one that's up, it's a, it's a permanent deer stand structure, excuse me, deer cabin. And here's another one and you can see the one on the left, it's the same thing. They've got an outbuilding, but they've got propane tanks. And they've moved rock and everything, they cleared out the area. So we're working with them and they're supposed to have that moved by Fourth of July is when we did that. So so just let you know real quickly, when we run into these and usually what happens is a forester kind of stumbles onto it because we manage a hundred fifty thousand acres of land and when they're looking at areas that need management for forestry, you stumble onto these and and you identify them because we're not out looking for them, they're coming our ways. But what I always do is I write a nice letter to the people to say, do you have any documentation on where the lines are? No one's come up with anything yet. So then that's when we go through the normal process of bringing it to the land review committee and go through each step where it has come to the county board a couple of times and such. And like I said, we've all been kind of caught by surprise, one led to two, led to three, this whole situation. So that's why I'm very glad we got a chance to talk about this. What happens though is these are a private sale to that individual, the public can't bid on this. And that's what's very different from our normal land sale process. We might offer up a half dozen at a time, this goes to the owner only and he puts in a sealed bid at a settled on a praise price, which goes to county board also. But then they they get that property. And I know this came up last time and Commissioner Olson brought this up and that's why Brent's here to talk about is if we haven't talked about permitting and and zoning. But non-shoreland, because I know that question came up, well, don't they need any survey or don't they need anything to get a building permit? And non-shoreland, there is no building permit required whatsoever. Septic permits are required countywide. So that's probably why we're maybe seeing a few less of these now. Shoreland within a thousand feet of lakes or three hundred feet of rivers, a building permit is required. And landowner provides a sketch of proposed location with setbacks. So there's no survey required and that's something that we could always discuss. I know Brent was apprehensive to go down that route, but that's up to the county board and.
Mr. Chair, o- otherwise, aside from the the shoreline ordinance, there there is otherwise no setback. I mean, we have no zoning in the rest of the county and so you can build right on the property line?
If there is no county regulation that says that they have to be set back.
Yeah.
Okay, and on those that they do inspect where there is an order or zoning, the environmental services does conduct a site inspection, but they don't know where the boundary line is and that's not their job to figure out where the boundary line is, property boundary. So in speaking with Brent, if building ends up in location not meeting setbacks, owner is responsible to move or to bring it into compliance. And so before we get any further, I want to let you know, I did talk to my counterparts at the different counties, you know, there's fifteen of us that have land departments, got responses from about ten or eleven and eight or nine are handling it the same way we are. You know, if you have a situation, you get it surveyed, you go through the whole process, you sell it to the adjacent landowner. I don't think anybody has it to the extent we've had it because I've kind of checked and I said, well, how many of these you run into and they say, oh, we might run into one a decade. So I'm not quite sure why we're so lucky to be having so many of these. But every other county has pretty much done the same thing. We have Cass County asked people to move them and I guess that's no, no excuses whatsoever from what I understand. I can't I don't work there, but that's what the county land commissioner said, we tell them to move them and they get moved. Pine County, I think I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, they ask people to move them and if someone disagrees, they come in front of the county board to state their case and then the county board decides whether, you know, how we want to handle that. Because like I said, you've seen some of these, you've got half a house on it. So those are things that so I'm glad we're talking about this so we can figure out how we want to move forward. So here's some of my thoughts, just as a maybe a starting point for for the board to decide how we want to move forward or what exactly we'd like to do with this. You know, case by case basis, I think that's a little bit more similar to Pine County. You know, any discovered encroachment is brought to the county board promptly to decide a course of action. You know, we'll try to figure out how we want to move forward. And I think that should include the the encroacher coming to the meeting, either at that meeting or a future meeting to discuss things. Another thought is maybe refer to the land review committee, which you already have in place. You know, it's about a nine person committee, two land commissioner, two county commissioners, Richard Anderson and Reed Olson are on that and Brent and the highway engineer. And it's already in Tom, county administrator. So there is quite a few people in place already that would have a good good input on that. And then last, I don't really want to condone another committee because I think we have enough of them. But we could always form a committee to come up with something is how we want to move forward to address these situations. So that's what I kind of leave you with. I'm only going to go through it in a hurry because I know you've got a busy schedule. Here's one we found, they just thought it threw up there, so old, we don't want to take it down, actually looks kind of nice on landscape and I know that's a little hypocritical there, but it's not, it's not usable. It's got gaps in the boards and everything, an inch thick or an inch wide and they can't use it, but but that's why I'd like to come forward here and ask the county board to consider how we want to move forward on these situations.
Chair, I think we have the possibilities of how we could handle these situations and and one thing came to mind, I do sit on the planning commission and they are used to dealing with variances at the board of adjustment level that we each have a representative we spoke about earlier and then the representative at large. Do we have them have these issues when they come up, be brought to that group? To, you know, they're used to having the public hearings and having the people come in and and do we just add that to that group with that? Yeah, from what your thoughts are on that.
Mr. Chair, I I I sat on the the planning commission for the city of Imidji and the and the planning board for, I think, a total of about five years and one thing that I really loathe is after the fact variances and I I don't want to form a policy that streamlines after the fact variances because what it'll end up doing is making it easier and it'll, it'll promote people doing things that they know that they can't and then hoping that they can fall on the good graces of of whether it's us or or the planning commission. Saying, oh, my gosh, I did this accidentally and now you're telling me I have to do thirty thousand dollars worth of work, you know, to to correct it. That's, I can't afford that, you know, think, you know. And I think it'd be really difficult.
I'm not saying that we should promote it or or, you know, I'm just saying that to me, there's a big difference between, you know, now the the monumentation process, remonumentation has has changed it and they're a couple feet over from what they thought they were and it's a fence versus a house or whatever, but the plan, the board of adjustments, you know, people are used to dealing with a lot of those types of issues on shoreline typically and and, you know, they and we already have them set up
Sure.
To be able to deal with situations like that and having the person come in and pitch their case to them and you know, they're not, don't take it lightly when there's after the fact variance requests and stuff like you said. And that's just one thought, certainly don't have to be that way. We could do everyone ourselves or we could, you know, come up with some other plan, but I just thought that might be a an option for us.
Mr. Chair, if I could just mention a couple of things here that that come to mind. We've been kind of doing this somewhat quietly, not to try to hide anything, but they've just kind of gone through the system without drawing much attention to it. And now that it is a little bit more out in the open, I don't want to encourage other people to to do this because they say, well, there's a pattern here that they're already selling us the property. Why don't we just do this? Then the other thing, like I mentioned to a commissioner or two, these have only been quarter acre, third acre, half acre issues. What happens if someone builds about four hundred or five hundred feet into tax for the property? And then you can't carve out a fraction of an acre, you know, so that's just something I wanted to mention and that's why I'm looking for direction.
Mr. Chair, I think that either what what Craig proposed to me isn't a bad idea or or having the land review committee, having the land review committee or the or the planning commission talk about it and and kind of come up with a set policy so that it's so that it is. I mean, I'm sure you did agree, but just so that it's the same every time, you know. The same every time, you know, and it's, I mean, it is kind of tricky, it is, it is, as 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 properties are are. As we get more defined property boundaries, like like Commissioner Gosick said, yeah, we don't want to penalize people that. That use the information that they had twenty years ago, and now tell them that they have to move a structure or something, but I think that we want to really. I would like to send out a very strong message that we're not going to. Be lenient on people who are, you know, when a when a property gets put on where maybe a foot of it is on their own property and the rest of it is on the public land. And then magically, a quarter acre of trees also disappear, so they have a view of of the water that's that's a quarter mile away. I mean, it's those sorts of situations where I think we need to come down hard on people and and not be very sympathetic. But when it is, when it is actual. And I don't know where we find that balance is the is the trick, right, but. So I I would, I would be in favor of trying to devise. A a policy that kind of better guides what we do, and then we don't have to have. Petition petitioners come on a regular basis and 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 plead their cases where we have something that is a little more definitive and and that everybody understands.
And I think we don't want to break something that either, you know, what Dick's been doing, anything that's movable. Bottom line should be moved.
Yeah.
And if it's something that isn't movable, like a garage in this case, or part of a house or whatever, that's where I think. The circumstances, there is no precedent that each case needs to be taken on its merits, and and if there's. You know, information, whether we get it brought to the land review committee or brought to the the Board of Adjustment. But it needs to be brought or to the or to us, we need to, you know, have that information and and make a decision on a case by case basis.
Mister Chair Commissioners, if I could suggest something, and you don't have to take this for any grain of salt, but. I actually think the land review committee might be a good place to send these to. Because it is all county employees, you know, we're and county administrator, we'd all be looking at it. And they only meet once a year, and some of these have been out there for decades, so that shouldn't make a problem, but for instance, I've got one coming up where I'm getting. Pressure from the landowner, I want to sell it, I'm going broke type thing, I'll be honest with you, he's kind of pressuring me to keep this moving. Land Review Committee meets once a year, if we do decide to go to the county, or the, excuse me, the legislature, they meet once a year. So it could turn into a two year process, but I still think that would probably be maybe the best. Avenue to try this, to bring it to the land review committee. When they meet, we're certainly not going to grab a meeting just to solve one issue, but I think I would, if I get a. One tomorrow, I'll say, well, you know what, the land review committee meets in the fall. We'll take a look at it in the fall and decide how we want to proceed forward with it.
And then the the land review committee would make a recommendation to the to the board?
Correct.
Would, so the the final say would still be at the at the board level?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, and I was thinking about that as well, sending it to the land review committee. Yeah, I understand that the. Brent and I are are busy, you know, we're working with the VRBO, and I'm not saying that they can't handle any more work, it's just. To me, it just seems like the land review committee is a little bit more streamlined, you know, with the. We have two commissioners on there and and things like that, so I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Mister Chair, with the the two that are on the land review committee, have a promise, some of these are in their district potentially, not not geared so much necessarily. But definitely Mister Anderson, and, you know, like, that's one of the reasons why we have the Board of Adjustment, and so that it's not specifically us making those decisions or more impartial space, you know. And as long as they're okay with that, I don't, certainly don't have a problem, but the only other thing would be if if there was an issue was because they'd only meet once a year, and where's the. Planning Commission Board of Adjustment needs, you know, in a lot of cases monthly, but the, you know, every every couple of months for sure.
I I'm I'm okay with it, I think that that because the the like, like Dick said, the the. The legislature has the final say, and since they only meet once a year, if we meet in the fall. And and deal it all, then send, and then we have a package to send to the legislature.
Yeah, and I'm, as far as I'm concerned, we can, we can do it with the land committee. Also, from the standpoint that it still comes to the board to make the final decision, we might make a recommendation. But that doesn't need to be followed. But I also want to say that, Deck, you've done a a really superb superb job, I think, over the years. In conducting and getting things moving that needed to be moved. Or settled, and. This is just going to be a support, hopefully for for you or whoever is in that position.
I appreciate that, and I try, and I would like to have the backing of the county board, if someday I do have to tell someone. You need to move something or not, but, yeah, that's a good way, and I also like it for the fact that. We wouldn't have the person come in front of the board until I guess we. Got to the point of the land review to committee decided to do something, went to the county board, they supported that recommendation, and I forwarded to the landowner. And he has a problem, he or she has a problem with it, then they can come and. Address the board.
One thing that I I still didn't get answered that I had asked. Our county attorney, what are, what is our, so say we don't want to, we don't like the idea of them getting, you know, asking forgiveness after the fact, it's a blatant, blatant deal. You don't have to sell them the property, but what is our other option then, you know, can we, and what's the timeline on that other option as far as forcing them to? Move their whole house or take it, you know, take it down, what what are our options there?
Yeah, so, um, we are the property owner, we have property rights, we can't come to negotiated settlement where we. Either sell them the land or they. Agree to move the property, then we would take them to court, and we could start a legal action to force them to. Remove the property, you know, and that's, that can be done, I mean, that's, that's a. Political question as much as it is a legal question, because, you know, anytime you're going to have the county sue a citizen or even a noncitizen. You you probably want to take those case by case, I don't think you'd want to have them, you know, playing policy on that unless you're doing it. We don't allow any of these, no matter what, and doesn't matter if you're encroaching by an inch or a mile, you're, you know, a little bit, you know, if you take that policy, then, yeah, we'd be taking a lot of support. The the nice thing with county land at first possession is not allowed against government land, so it doesn't matter how old these are. You know, it was it was two private landowners, and one person built on, you know, their fence a little bit older. If you wait fifteen years, well, you've lost the right to challenge that the guy can adverse possess that and readjust the property. When you're talking government land, can't do that, so, I mean, we could have someone from the twenties, you know, but again, if it's a surveyor's air from the twenties, are we going to hold the. You know, accountable, that that's a, that's a policy question, that's, that's, but if if you want to dig your heels in and say, no, we're going to make the move. We absolutely have the ability to do so, you want to be cautious, because you can't be. You got to treat similar, if you're going to do that, you got to treat similar situations similarly, you can't be arbitrary and capricious on. On how you're forcing property rights, because that could come back and bite you in a. Counter suit or something like that, but, I mean, we would just take each one of these as they came, and I'd advise on any individual case.
So Mister Chair, wouldn't you say, David, that then it'd be a good idea to have countywide zoning with a ten foot setback on any any structures? I mean, I think if we had a minimum, yeah.
Because, again, we have, we have the civil courts to address property. I would, I I I wouldn't remember this.
They kept you all purposely.
I would, I would, you know, if you guys want me there.
Commissioner Gukic.
You can look at aerial photos. And from the late eighteen hundreds to the early nineteen hundreds, the. People that came up here on ox carts and and however, you you can see property lines, I mean, they had ways of figuring out whose property was what. We don't have a, we don't have a rash of problems here, because it's my opinion that. There's certain folks that are just going to say, eh, big deal. But anybody with a compass can get to corner lots and do some clearing and make sure that you don't build over the land lot. But they're just doing it and saying, we'll just take the fine. In the fifties and the sixties and the seventies, I had, I had customers, clients in my office say. Oh, we're just going to take that bluff down, we'll just take the fine, because it was a fine process then. Now, you don't get to do that anymore. When you're caught doing some night excavating or weekend excavating, what do you get to do, Brent? Put it back to the original condition, period, right? Restore it to the original condition, so. Without taking a real hard line, I'm in favor of what everybody else is saying, let the land review committee. Do that, and they better come back to this podium and tell us that, oh, boy, you know, we tried to lay it out, but, you know, there was a bad this or that, and it hasn't been remonumented, and. We didn't survey it, they need to, they'll need to plead their case to the land review committee. They're they're going to have to follow real hard guidelines, because otherwise, we've already started a precedent. Dick has already, and I'm, that's not a dagger at you, Dick, but we've started a precedent already. And anybody with half a, half a legal inkling is going to say, well, you sold it to Juleson, you sold it to Alvestre, you sold it to, so you're going to sell it to me too. So we've already started the precedent, so all we can do is try to. Beef up our policy through the land review committee to say. It's gonna, we're going to keep a hard line, because these were all little bitty acreages, they were small in fractions. And the example that I give is a piece of land that I own in Hagley Township. Seven years ago, I got a quote to survey an eighty acre piece of land, and it was nine thousand dollars. And after they remonumented, that same survey got done for seventeen hundred dollars. So that was the point of the county board in doing the remonumentation to. Get into the folks out there that, hey, we're trying to be fair too, and we're spending. The effort to get monumentation done, so pay attention. Get your, get your boundaries figured out, I'm all in favor of the land review committee, we do not need another committee, have you seen our committee list? Yeah, we got it. Use the existing, use the existing committee, that's mine.
And the shoreline ordinance and stuff, we believe the stat of the precedent issue has been squashed by the courts, has it not?
Or variances?
Yeah.
It has. Or is it ruled that there is no such thing as precedence and variance?
Right.
Because each application has to be.
Right.
Severed in time and space.
No, so we could say that, that each of these situations were negotiated and. Worked out and on a case by case basis.
And the the Minnesota courts have really pushed municipalities and townships and counties to get away from after the fact variances. And to really be strong about restoration and and not allow, and like it's like Commissioner Luke said, a lot of these are fairly small infraction, but there are some big examples. Where where people said, best fine I ever paid.
Yeah, you know, look at my view, you know, and it cost them ten thousand, I I know one in particular, cost ten thousand dollars, fine ten thousand dollars. It got rid of a bluff, it flattened off a lot, it created three buildable lots, best ten grand fine that particular person ever paid. And. I think we've taken a little different approach as of late, so I'm in favor of the land review committee.
Okay, and would, Dick, would you be beefing up the policy then, or changing the policy so that we have a policy to follow?
There is no policy, so I guess that's one thing, case by case basis, is what I'm kind of hearing, and I agree with that. And Jim, I think, or Commissioner Lukachev, I I think the precedent, at least it's only been small acreage.
Right.
You know, someone comes in with fourteen acres, well, that's.
Remember, I didn't mean that negative, because resolving an issue is better than than playing hardball, and I think right now we don't have any. Really hard feelings, right, we've resolved some that. That could get resolved, we've moved some then when they could move them, and then we've given them a third of an acre, a point four of an acre, you know. We're we're trying to be reasonable too.
Well, we sold it to them, we don't want to hear anybody say, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, just another thing, I'd just like to leave one last comment, it sounds like we don't need to prolong this, but. We've had a couple hunting shacks that are, are they or aren't they, and they're in townships that haven't been remonumented yet. They've been out there since the fifties and sixties, I just saw them, let's wait for the remonumentation to come in, make a little bit more sure, and then if they have to. Survey it, like I said, it'll be more reasonable, so I'm working with a couple of people that way also, you know.
Couple of them won't be here by then.
Been here since the fifties, I kind of said, well, please don't add to what you've got out there.
Yeah.
You know, and and move forward, but.
That's a better approach, you know, it's a great way to to not take the iron fist.
Yeah.
You know, and that's not what we're trying to do here, we're not trying to create an iron fist, we're trying to create reasonable and logical. Equity across the table, you know, if if one can do it, then everybody would be able to. So I I think you've done a good job, Dick, and you've done it, you've done it diplomatically, you know, and you've done it politely.
Thank you, Mister Moore, I do appreciate. Your eleven years here at the colony so far, and look forward to, you know, eleven more.
Yeah, I was going to say, don't say eleven more. I heard Jody's going to hear just his eighty. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next two. Items on the agenda are, I believe, from the sheriff, so. Welcome, Sheriff.
Good afternoon. All my stuff's set up here. For you today, we have a request to spend some more money. I think the last time I was here, we were asking the same thing, but this year is for the jail needs assessment, I submitted a work agenda bill. Also, a regular agenda bill for your consideration. As you know, we decided we needed to go do a feasibility study, jail assessment. Before we do anything moving forward with the jail, so the steering committee sent out an RFP back in November. And we received two results from that RFP, one of them from Goldman and Associates, the other one from Justice Planners. We received, reviewed those in the steering committee. And we have decided, the steering committee, they asked the board to take action and award a contract to. The Justice Planners LLC. Along with that work agenda, you see the feasibility study that we created and sent out along with the contract that is there for your consideration. Questions?
I think it helps being on the on the steering committee.
Well, this isn't really a surprise, I mean, we knew we were going to be doing this, you know, this isn't the first time we've heard.
It's just formal board action to award that contract, it's for a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred is the, would be the total amount, right now. If it's awarded tonight to the individual from Justice Planners, will be here next week. He'll fly in on, I believe it's the seventh, he'll be here for a couple of days. At that point, he's going to go out and make contacts with all those people that are going to be providing information to him. And he'll be collecting that information, and I believe our assessment is due by in August, I don't remember the exact date, it's due back here in August. And at that point, we'll come to the board with the results of that, and then the first big question. Will be made by the board on what we do. And if it wants to be moved to consent agenda, I'd be happy with that too.
Should we put it on the consent?
I I'd be fine with that. Goodbye me, I'll make them, yeah, yeah, move it there.
All right, the next thing is the jail project reimbursement resolution, and I'm going to pass the ball over to Tom.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, so we have a reimbursement resolution for your consideration. Again, asking for action at the regular session. This reimbursement resolution is a proactive step for us to recover costs that would be. Leading up to whatever the jail project looks like, so, for example, the consulting work that we're we're spending money on. This needs assessment, a feasibility study, any preliminary arch, preliminary architectural or engineering analysis, potential property acquisitions, and again, all of that's up in the air, we don't know exactly what this project is going to look like till we get the needs assessment and feasibility study done. However, we know that we'll be incurring those costs out of other sources of funds that the county currently has, which could be eligible for replacement if a bond was to be issued for the full jail project. So what we're doing here is we're essentially preserving our rights to reimburse ourselves through this reimbursement resolution. For whatever the jail project looks like, through the proceeds of bonds, provided that the county does issue bonds for that project, so. It's fairly straightforward, it doesn't obligate us to anything, but it gives you a preserved right in the future to to make that determination, if you should so desire.
Bell check on Representative Matt Bliss's name.
Good as Mike.
Well, Mike, could I return on that?
This, this is pretty rudimentary.
This, this is pretty rudimentary, I'd, I'd say move it to consent, unless anybody wants more talk about it, I think it's pretty straightforward what Tom Berry presented, we just wanna put our foot in the, in the marker to make sure we can get this back in the bonding.
Okay, it'll be nine J. If everyone's okay.
I'm good with it.
Do, we had, we also have the, the public hearing date, is that in, did you add that?
No.
To the consent agenda, the, cause I, I, I had that as I, as I, and then jail, uh, the jail feasibility study I had as J.
Oh, okay.
And then.
So, what is I?
I is a public hearing, March fifteenth for the VRBO ordinance. Setting that public hearing date.
Give me the date again, please.
March fifteenth.
Richard was in the education system, he doesn't like people looking over his shoulder.
Very good.
Well, then this one would be seven.
Seven K.
So then, Mr. Chair, we can cut the sheriff and Jared loose, and they don't have to stick for the
Yeah.
regular meeting.
Unless one of us pulls it out of the consent agenda.
So, seven K for, for item eleven?
Want these back?
Eleven, yeah.
You don't need that, D. Richard.
That's it, no.
Any chance you guys can tag team up with Cooch County, have you been following the, the happenings up there? I get the paper for International Falls, and they're starting this, they're right behind us in process. They're just a little bit behind. Mr. Chair, I just say we keep the pedal down, we gotta just keep this moving forward and, and keep action going.
That, you know, I wanna, uh, to that, uh, I, I think it's good to have, you know, the sheriff on, on board and, and, uh, Ben, you know, with the construction engineers really keeping us on task and on, on, on the timeline that, that, uh, that was presented, you know? I believe we were meeting again tomorrow morning, so I mean, it's a, it's a, you know, two-hour meeting, you know, every other Wednesday, you know, and, uh, when I, when I first volunteered for, for, for the steering committee, I, I didn't realize, you know, the, the huge time commitment that, that, uh, comes along with being on the steering committee, you know, you mentioned oh, a meeting twice a week, but I think it's, it's more than that, because I mean, there's so much reading and, and a lot of materials that you have to commit to, to, to show up prepared, so, you know, I mean, I, I completely understand that, you know, it's a it, it can wear, you know, uh, yeah, you know, and. All right, so I, I guess I was expecting, uh, us to use up a little bit more time, but, you know, it's, it's great when we can, uh, take a break in between meetings, so I thank you, Sheriff, I appreciate that. So, with that, we will be on to item eight, the joint Leech Lake County meeting agenda items, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Share, uh, as you know, we have tentatively set March first as a date for a joint Leech Lake, uh, Beltrami County meeting, uh, one PM at a, uh, a location to be determined yet, still working out those details with, uh, Leech Lake representative. We had promised that we would put a list of topics together and share that with, uh, Leech Lake. Uh, I understand that they are going to be doing the same, although I have not heard from them just yet. The topics that we came up with were developed in consultation with yourselves and the staff, and myself, uh, and others, and so, uh, we've put together a small list here for your consideration as the, in the attachment. What we wanted to do today is get your additional thoughts and comments on this list, uh, and blessing on a final list of topics that then I can share with, uh, our Leech Lake representative, and they can carry that to their board, and then do the same with regard to their topics for us. Uh, with the hope that soon we can develop a finalized list of topics for the meeting, and then get that published, and, and then move towards the meeting. So, that's what I have for you, for your consideration and discussion. Two of the big items here are related to the sheriff's office and potentially social services, so I've asked for our director of Health and Human Services and the sheriff to be present for this conversation, so you could get any questions or concerns addressed as well.
Mr. Chair, um, are the, the, the Senate bill, and referring to, referred in this letter that you handed out, Sheriff, is that the, like, the cross-deputization, or whatever of, uh, I, I, maybe I'm not saying it right, but, um,
Those two bills are gonna be at the legislature again this year, they were there last year. Uh, what they're looking for is to, to repeal, uh, a law that was put in place that requires the tribal agency to have a law enforcement agreement with the counties, and so, uh, of course, uh, myself and the other sheriffs are adamantly opposing that, uh, and this comes down to just, again, it's operational things on part of the tribal agency. One of the things we look for in law enforcement, and we all demand from our, the public is demanding from us, is transparency and accountability, and I think we can all agree with that, and so, one of the issues that, that I have, um, and it wasn't until I became sheriff that I really understood that there had been some issues, uh, why this tribal agreement is there. And until those issues are addressed, I think we need to continue to have that law there, to have that tribal agreement, so, um, again, they have to do with law enforcement issues, how things are investigated, the accountability, transparency, um, and those things need to be addressed by the, by the, uh, not only the law enforcement agency, but also the tribal council. One of the big considerations is the fact this, the funding and the manpower for, uh, the Leech Lake Reservation, they are all grant-driven. They have no tax base, uh, in order to fund them, they wanna be a, a, they wanna have the primary law enforcement agency, the primary role there, um, and they don't have any funding source for that, and so that's a great concern for us sheriffs, how are you gonna maintain that law enforcement level without a funding source? The other area is that, uh, again, transparency and accountability. If you're not a band member, the constitution for the Leech Lake Reservation says that you don't have a right to go before council. And you folks all remember that we had lots of people come here, and were very upset with law enforcement, our agency, and they had your ear, they were able to come and talk to you, and without you being a tribal member, you, their constitution says you don't have a right to come in and, and say that you have a problem with something, how it was handled, so that needs to be addressed. The other thing is the, um, the opinion of the Attorney General's Office, and that the sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer in each county, um, and, uh, again, we, as a sheriff, I'm not willing to give that up, um, and not be the chief law enforcement officer of that county. And that includes every municipality here, police department operates, so, um, again, myself and the other sheriffs that are affected by travel agencies, um, aren't willing to give up. Now, other agencies have done that, and it's been a very good reason for that, and they've had different circumstances. Um, again, uh, I, I look at some of the ones that have been repealed, and there were a different set of circumstances in what we're dealing with here today, and if those things are addressed, I got no problem with it. And so, we voiced our concerns, and, uh, again, unless those things are addressed, uh, I'd be open to it if they did, if they addressed them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
One of the.
Nailed down a place, to me.
No.
The city council is actually meeting with the Leech Lake Band as well, they, I believe, are doing it at the Sanford Center. I don't know, not saying that that's where we should do it, but, um, I think originally there were some talk about possibly doing it at the Tenlake Town Hall, or something like that. But if, you know, just I thought I'd throw that out there, that's where they're, I just had a meeting, uh, yesterday, and one of the city council members was, was on that same board as me, and, and they said that's what they were doing.
Yeah, we have, uh, two locations identified, the Mission Community Center and the, uh, Ten Lakes Town Hall. The person I've been working with was gonna check on availability, and also there was concern about Wi-Fi capabilities at, at one of their facilities, so, um, I haven't heard back yet, but we are still working on that location. Because we wanted to also combine this as a, um, remote meeting, you might recall, was part of the reason for trying to have something held out there in the, in the township to satisfy, you know, our attempts to get the commission out into the community and, and conducting business, and of course, we would attempt to have that meeting, or series of meetings, the work session and the, the regular meeting at three and at five in that facility. So, that does present a little bit of a logistical issue if it is their facility and, and they have to keep it open, so we're still working through those.
So, Tom, I, I would encourage you to try to get a date or a place set by next meeting, because we're a month out, and, and our next meeting will have, uh, you know, two weeks to really get the word about, are you, are meeting location and thing like, uh, things like that, and, and, you know, uh, make sure that, uh, spaces is, uh, accommodating for, for, you know, a, a large crowd, if, if there should be one, and, and so, I think logistics really need to be worked out, uh, fairly soon.
You know, maybe be proactive and, and get ahold of the Tenlake Town Board and find out if there's, and if, if there's available, and if it is, then offer that to the Leech Lake Tribe, and, and say, you know, that this is available, if you don't have someplace, we can meet here.
Sounds good, thank you.
And, um, since we have Becky here, you know, uh, Health and Human Services, you know, does, does a really great job with their relationships and, and relationship building, you know, and, and I know the work that they do, you know, with Red Lake, so I'm kinda curious to know what kind of relationships we, you know, the county has with, with Leech Lake.
So, Leech Lake is also an initiative tribe, um, for quite a few years now, but we, like with Red Lake, still share cases, um, if they're outside of the boundary or within Beltrami County boundary. Um, and we have a very positive working relationship, Jeff Lynn has done a really good job of keeping communication open. Um, I think him and Earl Robinson, who's his counterpart in Leech Lake, um, are talking about coming and presenting that positive relationship, so it's, it's going really well. No complaints, we still work closely with our Iqwa cases, um, and, um, our partners on the Iqwa cases, and our staff are doing wonderful jobs, so just good things, so I think that's a nice thing to bring forward, is when we, we have something that's working out well.
Thank you, Becky.
Yeah.
So, I, I'd imagine that, um, what do we have, one, four, seven, seven, uh, agenda topics, and I'm not, I'm not I'm not too sure if we're, if we're gonna be able to get through, you know, seven, so I mean, if we can, uh, yeah, kinda narrow the list, um, on what we think would be some good, uh, uh, discussion topics, what I think would help.
Well, I put on house, housing and homelessness, because I, and maybe that's a little bit early to have that discussion with, with the tribe, uh, seeing as that we haven't had a discussion about housing at the county level, you know, one of the things that I'm just interested in is there is a lack of, of housing in, in our community, and what can we do as a, as a government? Uh, what can we do to help the, the Beltrami HRA, the, the Vimiji HRA? What is Leech Lake doing as far as building, you know, it's a broader discussion, so I'd be, I'd be fine with removing that, because it's, it's a little bit amorphous of what would, what we, what we would talk about, uh, you know, I think that, so, if that would help, and then maybe at some other point.
I've been working with their housing authority for twenty-five years, so they have, they, that might still be a pretty good topic.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Cause it could, could be more than what you're thinking of.
Yeah, and probably, yeah, and which is, which is why I wanted to talk to them, you know, but.
I think that's a valid discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that they have, that's one of, that's a very big, uh, very big topic over there.
Yeah, yeah.
They have a lot of needs and.
And, you know, we are, our communities flow back and forth, you know, between one another, and so I think it, 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 there is a, a discussion there, but it doesn't have to take a, a lot of time.
That could be a, it, it could be a fairly short, pretty good topic
Yeah.
to discuss.
Okay.
No, I, I think one of the things, maybe the legislative priorities, I'm not too sure uh, what their legislative priorities are, or how ours, you know, might align with theirs, or theirs might align with ours, but one thing I know about, uh, tribal government is, um, they really have the ear, you know, of, uh, of the legislature down in St. Paul, so I mean, if there's any way that we can work, work together on on our priorities, I think that would, you know, maybe, maybe be worth, uh, a discussion.
And who put the minutes of the bills on there?
Oh, that would be the sheriff.
All those were the two that he was speaking to.
Correct.
So, I, you know, maybe in time, the strengthening of the relationship would, would kinda take place, so but we'll see, we'll see where it goes.
Well, if you'd like, I, I can communicate these to, uh, the Leech Lake representative and, and get their input as well. If you're open to us kind of pulling an agenda together with this, these general tenants, if you have something very that, that you want specifically on the agenda that, to push for, that I can certainly do that, otherwise, if you wanna give us some flexibility with this guide to put something together, we could do that too, if that helps.
Then I'd like to just mention that, remember when we went to the outskirts of, of the city, we also left a certain amount of time for the people to bring up topics, so we'll have two different discussions kinda going on.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Anderson, I, I think that's definitely gonna be the intent as it relates to our remote meeting. Um, I don't, did you intend for that to also happen during the joint meeting?
No, 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 I'm just, I just merged into the other one as well.
Okay.
Roadway coordination, I like, you know, I've actually had communications with their roads department and stuff over mutual things of plowing and blading, and, and sometimes some miscommunication between, you know, us doing it, and then them doing it right afterwards, and, you know, coordinating that is important.
Yeah, well, seeing the, the scenic, seen the scenic road and, and the mission road, you know, I, I, I believe the the collaboration is there, you know?
Yeah, and I.
Just on the plowing and blading.
I, I've gotten, uh, I got a phone call from a tribal, one of the tribal council members, um, I, I don't even, I think it was it eighteen months ago or something, where we were talking, I, I can't remember, I think I steered him towards, probably towards Bruce, but, um, about, about just that, blading and, and plowing on, on some roads in Tenlake Township.
All right. Right, I believe, uh, Tom has his homework.
Right.
We need to have all, we need to have a meeting place.
No.
I, I don't think Mission's gonna be the right spot, because we can't stay there and do our. I, I don't think Mission's going to be the right spot because we can't stay there and do what we. So I think you gotta think that off the plate, but that's not on our.
Oh, is, is it outside of the county? Is?
Uh, it's not outside the county, uh, to my knowledge, but it is controlled by the tribe. So the concern is, you know, can they make it available to us for our second meeting?
Oh, I, okay, okay. Yeah.
It was one of their, uh, community buildings that they did right on Mission Road. It's easy to get to.
Yeah, yeah.
Been by there.
Yep, yep.
Everybody knows how to get there.
Yep.
But I think it's not, not a comfortable transition into our regular meeting.
Okay.
Ten Lake Town Hall is pretty decent size.
Yeah, we, we met there. Were you? Okay, okay.
That's easy for them to get to.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's really, you know, that's.
It was just down the road.
Yeah.
Right. Exactly. Yeah.
Just north a couple of miles.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it's actually right off the main highway there. So.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Let's kind of candidly set, cause like Commissioner Sumner said, we'd like to tell folks and, and let them know. Especially that end, that the township's that way. We want to know that we are coming out to do what they say they want us to. Come out, have meetings out of here, out there.
Like we have, uh, uh, notification requirements anyways.
Right.
You know, so very good.
All right. So item nine administrators update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a whole lot this time. Just a reminder of important dates. The AMC Tribal Relations Training Forum will be February 3rd and 4th. I think Commissioner Sumner is intending to attend. I know our Health and Human Services Director will be there. I'll be there. And I don't know if there's anyone else from the county that will be there. So.
Oh, Jared?
Oh, Jared, Jared, my apologies. Our Chief Deputy will be there as well. So we'll have a good showing, I think, which will be great. And, um, we'll follow up with you on anything that comes out of that. And then just as an aside, kind of an odd request, maybe I, I wanted to, um, get your blessing on something. I, um, brought to you probably six or eight, six weeks ago or so, the Greater, Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission was looking for a commissioner to serve District Two, which, uh, that particular seat came vacant recently, I guess late last year. And I brought that to your attention and, um, I hadn't heard of any names and I've been encouraged to, um, apply for that and I have an interest in it. And I wanted to get your blessing on, uh, my, I guess candidacy, if you will, for that it's not an elective position. It's just sitting on a, on a commission or a board, if you will. There is a commitment to 12 meetings per year. Each meeting is, um, once a month, uh, fourth Wednesday of each month for about five hours. I'm not concerned about that time commitment because certainly I'm more than willing and in most cases do already put more time in than, uh, than would be requested from this commitment. There is a $55 per diem. So I'm happy to give that up if there's any conflict associated with that. And I have talked to the Director of Boards and Commissions and established that, you know, I would be, um, you know, eligible for this role. I just felt it was important to bring to your attention and get your blessing. And if you felt comfortable with that, then I could move forward. Or I don't know how it would turn out. Uh, and if you're not, then, you know, that's okay too. I would be doing this as a citizen, not as a Beltrami County employee or appointed official. So, uh, I just turned that to you and if you're willing and able to have me do that, I appreciate it. If not, I'm happy to talk about it too, or if you decide against it, that's okay as well.
What was that for again?
It's the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission.
Who sponsors that? Or is that a DNR thing or the?
Uh, well, it's a board under the parks and it's under the state parks essentially, DNR. Yeah. So, um, and it's, uh, appointed by the governor. So it's a position on a commission that's appointed by the governor. And District Two, Beltrami County sits as the largest county, um, and has several assets, as you know, already that are in, you know, state parks, uh, that would be, you know, part of this conversation, but it's a statewide commission. So it's, it's all greater Minnesota, rural Minnesota.
What were these meetings? Yeah.
They are doing them Zoom, um, but also traditionally they have been held in different areas of the state. So it, it won't be in one specific location. They rotate around the state.
Five hour meeting, but then potentially travel time taking a full day out of your schedule or?
I suppose that that's possible, um, which again is the reason to bring this to you for your consideration.
How, how long of an appointment is it? Is that an, it's an ongoing standing committee? It's not just a, uh, one-year committee or anything? It'd be a.
No, I think this term is mid, midterm. So I think there's two years or a year and a half left on this term. And then, you know, it could be up for discussion after that.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any problem with that. I think it would be fine for, for him, he, he's doing it as a citizen. Why would that be an issue?
When are the meetings?
Uh, the fourth Wednesday of each.
What time is it?
It's from 10:00 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon.
Day on, yeah, once a month.
Yeah, if it's, uh.
You're saying that you're already making up time. So like any, like any of us, I mean, you gotta get your stuff done. And if that's what you're committing to, then you'll be in, at your desk at four o'clock on those Wednesday in the morning. We just had that discussion in the other room. You can work remotely, Mr. Chair. Stay done.
Right.
And I'm being serious there. I was on a similar, uh, Great River, whatever. And it got into a lot of time. It was just, so I'm okay with it. As long as you, you know, you're, you're going to still have to get your stuff done. So four to five hour meeting?
Yeah.
What are they gonna talk about for that? How do you talk about something for a five hour?
We find a way. I guess we have a lot of different topics that we're discussing, but we figure it out sometimes.
Even when we do three hours, that's a fun.
Yeah.
The one I sat on, they actually had about a half an hour discussion about, uh, studying the electric power poles in Sweden. And that they made them look like giants standing out, you know, holding up wire.
Wow.
So they, they sculpted them.
Yeah.
So that they looked like they were standing up, holding these big sixty.
Bunch of.
And we talked about that for like 30 minutes and I thought, wow, you guys must be bored. So I don't know what you're going to talk about. I'd be interested to hear some reports about what comes out of there. So, yeah, I'm, I'm interested.
And I had a two hour long, uh, meeting when I was on the town board. Retro reflectivity of both sides.
Yeah.
Two hours. Yeah.
Commissioner Olson?
Oh, I was just going to say, I concur with, with our colleagues that just spoke. I think if, if, if you, uh, as long as it doesn't impact your, and I don't think it will, I think you'll still see your duties and you'll still probably work 70 hours a week.
Don't have to spend time talking about if you should buy a pack of them. Just go buy a pack.
Right, right.
Well, you know, I, I, I agree with my colleagues here. And I think one of the, one of the things that when, when we brought you on and maybe one of the questions was, how would you get involved in the community? And I think, um, you know, this may take you around the state, but you know, it, it does get you involved. I, I do question, you know, the private citizen part because, you know, because of your, your role here in the county. I mean, you, are, are you really a private citizen when, when you're the CEO of, of a large county? So, um, I, I believe you, you had, you know, represent the county well and, and, and what, uh, you, you're pursuing here and, uh, uh, like my colleagues, you know, I, I would, uh, maybe like a report, you know, once, once in a while or, or see how it's going and things like that. Because I mean, uh, probably aside from what you mentioned a few, few weeks ago, a few months ago about, you know, about this board. I, you know, really wasn't aware of it. So, um, I commend you for your, for your, you know, willingness to, to actively participate in, in expanding, uh, your, your, your knowledge, uh, you know, of, of the great state of Minnesota.
And Mr. Chair, if I remember right, dude, this is, uh, uh, you'll be applying. It's not, it's not necessary that you're going to be.
Correct.
The selected person.
Yep, that's correct. Yeah. There's a good chance or I don't know what chance of making it or not making it. I have no idea.
Well, you know, I mean, if, if, if nobody has applied within the last two weeks or two months or however, how long it's been, you know, I don't, I don't see anybody else applying except, uh, you know, Mr. Olson wants to take on another role.
I do have a couple of hours free, but it's more the 10:00 PM to, to, to 3:00 AM is where I kind of have a slot. So they could move it to there. I'll apply.
Yeah. Thank you all very much.
All right. Well, there's, uh, the administrator's report. Any other business items up for discussion? Review the bills? So I guess we'll.
If, if we have a minute, I was asked to, uh, give an update on the Beltrami Transit. I sat on that and Reed, were you the alternate? Beltrami Transit?
I, yeah, I think.
Oh Craig, yeah. And we opted to, they have a board already, right? The Beltrami Transit Organization has a board.
Yes.
And we were kind of an advisory again, right?
I thought we were actually on that, but.
Yeah.
You and I went to it together a couple of years ago and.
Yeah. And it was court. Right. Yeah. And it was quarterly and we opted to not attend. I, I thought we reviewed it and said that it wasn't statutorily required for the Beltrami County Board to be represented there. So would you, you asked for an update on it. Would you double check that with David and make sure? Because, uh, the, the two gals that I worked with there said that they had done the review. They'd done the homework on it. And that, uh, we also sat on it jointly with the city folks. Uh, Emily Rivera was there.
Yeah. Is that still meeting?
We are not. No.
Not. Okay.
We haven't, I.
That's what I understood. That's.
Yeah. And I thought they, they, they asked the city and the county that we didn't need to do that anymore.
Okay.
Um, we do have financial, uh, input.
Yeah.
Beltrami Transit. Joint. It's a joint.
Yeah.
So just double, double check that, would you Tom?
We'll do. You bet.
But that's the, I was under the impression that we did the right thing and, and, uh, didn't.
Read.
Didn't need to.
Should we also talk?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
So are we, are we giving reports? So we can, we can adjourn?
Yeah. I think we should, if we have a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we, well, I guess we did get some of the things off the agenda, but we don't know how long the, the, the public hearing could take some time if there's.
You want to go now?
Yeah, I, I am leaving at six o'clock sharp.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We have to adjourn at six.
Yeah. Well, we've already talked about invoking Robert's rules and limiting the length of the meeting to six o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that we'll make a motion that would, Richard will make a motion to see if we all agree.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm going to just hand out, uh, real quick, uh, from the kind of an update also with Prime West, uh, Health Joint Powers Board. We're going to take legal action, uh, against DHS for their procurement process. They've been, uh, promising different things and then they follow through with the same old, same old. And so, um, it could end up being the demise of Prime, uh, Prime West Health if, if, uh, they don't follow the statutes that are there. So I'm going to just hand out, uh, a sheet of, of, uh, kind of talking points here. And if you have some time to look through those.
Yeah.
Reed, if you wanted to start back about.
Yeah. So I think we talked about this in our last meeting that, um, you know, DHS, uh, back in, I think it was 19, really kind of turned the procurement process on its ear and, um, and we, we threatened, well, I don't know if we threatened litigation, but we, we definitely talked about it and someone else ended up suing the, the DHS and then, and then they ended up throwing out the procurement process. So now here we are almost three years later and the, what they've did this time was actually even worse than what they did last time. Last time we went through the procurement process and then they said, well, we decided to go away from what the counties, uh, asked for. And we're going to go ahead and, and do, do this. And, um, this time as the RFP went out for the procurement process, they said in the procurement process that, or in the, in the cover letter, basically that there would not be single, um, organizations, doing the healthcare like Prime West does in 24 counties now, that all of those counties would have, uh, uh, at least two different parties, which will be a mess for our, our DHS, our, our HHS department. And it flouts, um, uh, state statute that says we have a role in the procurement process that we as counties can engage in county-based purchasing and be the sole, uh, entity and in the county that is, that is delivering, um, uh, health coverage to, um, to our, our vulnerable citizens. And so this is like, this is much more egregious than what they did last time. And, um, and it is just a slap in the face to not only to counties, but to the, to state statute, you know? And so they've really gone kind of rogue, in my opinion. Uh, I know it's like a, a perennial, uh, event is to beat up on DHS sometimes, but here is just, they really look to be a, a, um, department that is just completely running on its own, ignoring the will of the legislature, the will of the people and state statute, you know? So, um, I, I, I hope that we can get them to back away, uh, just with, with this threatened litigation and that they will go back to following state law. Or, or, or maybe that's not, that's giving them too much credit, if they would start following state law.
And all, and all 24 counties voted unanimously last week to go ahead with that process.
And by that, that, that is the, the representatives, the county representatives on the prime, on the Prime West Board, um, voted unanimously to pursue litigation.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Olson, can I give you my list of the next agencies that we want?
Is it right? You're right. Yeah.
DHS. They're all started, they're all, they're all initials.
Yeah.
So let's see how this one goes.
Right. We'll start with this one and then, and then, right. But it is, it is really frustrating because we, we are good. I think, I mean, of course I'm biased as a county commissioner, but we've been really faith, you know, good faith partners, um, with DHS. The, 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 the human, Health and Human Services Departments of all of these 24 counties go through great lengths to put together packets, uh, uh, applications to, to do all of this. And then in one, one email or one, one, one-page letter, DHS just completely undermines everything, you know? And, um, and it's illegal. Or at least it's a, it's a misread of the, of the, um, of state statute, misapplication.
Thank you.
Did, was that good?
Yes, it was good.
Okay.
The only thing you should have said is, it is your opinion that it's illegal.
That's right. That's what I said. Is, is, it is, it could be, it could be construed as a, as a misreading of state statute.
We may find out.
It's right.
Find out.
And I agree with that. I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing we have to do.
Yeah.
Or these agencies that push things downhill to local government units like your county. And after sitting on county board for a while, we all know that we, we have an awful lot of responsibility for distributing all kinds of goods and services to the general public. And when you run into these things, how do you come back?
Yeah. And this, this document that, that Commissioner Anderson just passed out is a really, it's, it's really succinct. You know, it's just a page, page and a, a page and a half. And it really does, I think, well articulate what DHS is doing, what we think they should be doing and, and, and how we can get back to that.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, let's, uh, adjourn. And then I'll be back for five o'clock.
That's super. Thank you. That's super. Thank you.
Call the regular meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, general comments from the board chair. Welcome, everybody. Don't have much comments this evening, so we will move on to citizens addressing the board. Anyone wishing to address the board on an item not on the agenda may come forward at this time to be recognized by the board chair. Please state your name and address for the record. Comments are limited to five minutes. A personnel complaint against an individual county employee may not be heard initially at a board meeting. Personnel complaints may be submitted to the board in writing through the administrator's office. A person addressing the board may not use profanity or vulgar language. If there's anybody who would like to address the board on an issue not on the agenda, may come forward. And please state your name and address for the record.
Greetings, Chairman Sumner. So James Dodds, twenty-three, thirty-one, Leekloss Drive, Southwest, Bemidji, Minnesota. Commissioners and respected staff as well. Thank you for your time and allowing me to give a few comments today. I would like to speak about the process of public hearings, the process of making important decisions, the process of allowing for the greatest amount of public input to take place, and the will of the people to make decisions by exercising their right to vote. The right to vote is sacred. One-way citizens are a part of the government process is by voting. This is perhaps the most sacred pride of citizenship, other than being able to stand in front of elected leaders and sharing testimony as I am right now. Thank you for allowing public comments. It deeply disturbs me to fathom the notion that our county commissioners can take away the basic citizenship right. Whether you're voting for a ballot question, candidate for elected office, voting is a cornerstone of our democracy, and it should not be taken lightly. I would like to see more consistency in public meetings. At your last meeting, you held public hearing on an important topic. I have many questions of the fairness and the timeliness of the way this topic was handled. I would like to see verbiage of a proposed resolutions that are important, that they warrant. If they're so important that they warrant a public hearing, shouldn't we see the verbiage for that? I see on the county website today that we have a public hearing. And lo and behold, there is a clickable item where you can click on and see more details. Public hearings have usually have multiple meetings. Sometimes you see a first, a second, and a third reading. The first reading is usually the introduction. The second reading is usually when action happens, and the third reading is usually when it's passed or adopted, or or there is a ceremony with that. Usually, these rules are usually there are rules, and usually they're posted, and they are stated, and they are followed. What I witnessed at the last meeting to me was somewhat embarrassing. When we have important topics like this of the last meeting, I ask that you adopt a better process to handle that topic. A topic that takes away the rights of the voter is a topic that warrants a fair process that is consistent. I felt as if the topic was purposely intended to be confusing for the sake of a speedy approval. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board? Are there any citizens wishing to address the board? I'll ask one more time. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board? Thank you. All right, I'll ask for the motion for approval of the agenda. Mr. Chair, we're going to add seven I public hearing for March fifteenth concerning short-term rentals. Did we come up with a time for that? Five o'clock, five o'clock time. Seven J, the jail assessment and feasibility contract. Seven K with the jail reimbursement resolution that we have in our packet, reimbursement resolution. Number eight will remain as is for the regular agenda. Number nine will remain the same. And then we have twelve become ten highway department lease to own a snow blower and eleven resolution for the D N R review of proposed tax forfeited land sales partial. Mr. Chair, with that, I make a motion that we accept this agenda. We've got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Chairman Sumner, wondering at what point do we we spoken about limiting the time of the next meeting due to the caucuses afterwards? Does that need to be part of the agenda, or is that after the fact?
Well, you know, I was going to make a motion to that effect separately, but what we can do is just add it as as a consent agenda. amended that we can have that as following the Robert's rules of order that we just go ahead and make sure that we're done by six o'clock tonight.
Make that seven L.
Seven L. Okay, so it's amended by me as we need a second on that one.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a good motion by Commissioner Anderson. And the second by Commissioner Gosbick to amend the motion to include adjourned by six P M. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just for for those listening at home and in the audience today, we today tonight is Minnesota caucus night, and by state statute, all public meetings have to have to be done by six P M., and so that's why we're adding that in to comply with state law. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And don't forget the caucus.
And then, yes, and then run to your caucus locations by six thirty.
All right. Any further discussion? Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda, the approval of the agenda passed. Motion for the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda, Mr. Chair. I'll second, Mr. Chair.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Lukic, second by Commissioner Olson for approval of the consent consent agenda. Any further discussion? None. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Brings us to the regular agenda. Item eight, public hearing, twenty twenty-two solid waste fee schedule changes. Right?
Good evening, commissioners. This fee schedule changes, I guess, something probably is going to be consistent to to our vendors don't get to us usually till December, sometimes the end of December, flooding us no price increases. The price increase is due to the tire, what we receive in our disposal costs, and this is just a pass-through cost. We don't add any any extra administration or anything on to this, but or any fee schedule changes that all these changes need to come before. So that's what that's what I'm proposing. We're proposing for semi-trailer tires from fourteen to fifteen dollars apiece and two hundred and twenty-five dollars to three hundred dollars a ton for the same commercial on-road tires. There's also a difference, which is already in the fee schedule for off-road, which would be considered like track and tires, state tires, such as that. And that there's no change to that. So that's that's what I that's what the hearings for and the request for the change.
All right, so we need to open the public here. Does there a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
A motion by Commissioner Anderson. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Gosbick. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. Or do we need a vote?
For a public. I think that you as a chair can just open the public hearing and close the public hearing.
Okay.
Without without a vote.
I'm still still noted this.
Yeah, but we do have a motion on the table that we do have.
So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. I I don't have my cheat sheet for the public hearing, so anybody here for the public hearing?
We'll take the recyclables, too.
If you're for the public hearing, now is the time to make comments for for the proposed twenty-two, twenty twenty-two solid waste fee schedule.
Do either Anderson or Gosbick, Mr. Chair, have any comments just to to inform the public if there's nobody here but for the sake of the folks watching and listening and keeping track? What is the the fee schedule really consist? The changes? What does it consist of?
I think Brian already explained that as far as this particular change, it's
Part of it.
This is just a piece of the the overall fee schedule. Yeah, and that we passed the fee schedule for the entire county for all of the fees, not just the solid waste department at the end of the year, but this came in after we had already passed the other changes, so we were having to bring it forth to accept this by the board. And it's, as Brian mentioned, it is just a pass-through. We're not adding any money on to it. It's it's strictly what our cost is and charging what what the companies charge us. You're welcome.
So so this is something that you guys discussed at the Solid Waste Committee?
Yeah, well, this particular one.
Communication. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, there are no citizens wishing to address the board on the on the public hearing for the commercial hours application, so close the meeting.
The public here.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Thank you. All right, so that will bring us to.
Mr. Chair, I'll I'll I think we we're being asked to approve the changes, so I'll I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-two solid waste fee schedule changes as as previously discussed.
And I'll second that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Olson, second by Commissioner Lukic to accept the twenty twenty-two solid waste fee schedule changes. Any further discussion? None. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Item nine, appointment of the Office of Auditor Treasurer with resolution. Just give me a moment, I'm trying to find it and if there's any.
You see, Mr. Chair, Jody Treat is online, so you could just.
Hey, Jody.
She may want to.
You're on mute. Okay, Jody. Still can't hear you.
Diane has unmuted me.
I heard her say.
We heard that, but not that.
Back to Real Tech Audio. Telephone call. I thought that's where it was, Diane. It was was is that Jody doing that?
I'm unmuted here.
There we go. We can hear you now.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I guess I'll just take a step back of where we've been in this process. This was a legislative action that happened about two years ago that allowed for the Commissioners to decide the appointment process or allowing the appointment of an auditor treasurer position along with other role officers. The county recorder, the auditor, the treasurer, or the auditor treasurer. Since that point, we had it was brought at a meeting and you had passed a resolution to have a public hearing to hear citizens comment. That resolution and that publishing followed state statute that was to be published for two consecutive weeks in the the official newspaper. And then after that, at the next available or the next regular board meeting, it was required by statute to have the public hearing. The public hearing was held at the last board meeting where citizens were allowed to speak. There were some emails read aloud, and then at that point it was tabled until today to hear that resolution. The the information has been posted, like I said, in the official newspaper and then also as part of the board packets. If you have any questions, I can answer any questions that that you may have. I think I've I've covered the process that's set forth in statute in the last couple of meetings, but if you have any other questions on that process, I would be happy to answer anything that that comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Well, I think, go ahead.
I guess for I'll I'll kick this off and I'll just go ahead and make a motion and then we can have discussion on the motion, but I will, I will, I will move that we that we do change the Office of Auditor Treasurer from from an elected position to appointed position.
Have we got a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Olson, second by Commissioner Gosbick to appoint the Office of Betrami County Auditor Treasurer from an elected.
Mr. Chair, just as for discussion, I just want to say that for 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 me, I am on the Association of Minnesota Counties General Government Committee have been for five years. We have, well, I guess I'm in my fifth year, so for over four years. We started talking about that, I think, before I got elected as a county commissioner. And so my whole last four years, this is a topic that we, no, indeed, it has been five years going on six. Time flies. So this is this is a topic that I'm very comfortable with, something that we've been talking about at that level, putting together the draft language to then approach the legislature. And it's something that I support supported all the way through that process before the legislature approved it two years ago. So I think that I have the benefit of of a lot of time talking about this issue more in the abstract and not in a in a specific one county sense. And so this is an easy vote for me. I I I understand where from some people's perspectives, this may seem like it's come up really quick, especially from the community. But anytime we have a a public hearing, we give proper notice. You know, we are following state statute all the way through this process. And so I don't have a an issue with it. I think a lot of counties, especially more rural counties, are moving this way just as we did with the recorder and with other other row officer positions. So for me, this is easy to do, and that's why I'm supporting it, because it's something that I've been involved in for a long time. So that's where I'm coming from. That's my perspective on this.
And as far as myself, Mr. Chair, again, I I made contact before the last meeting and with constituents, but even this week I've had a number of folks that contacted me their text or call, and all but one that was sent to me with a letter, all but one of them was asking me to be sure to vote in favor of this appointment. So that that's again, going back to constituents and we've had the opportunity to listen to folks talking, and I did not hear one person at our public hearing that was against this appointment. So I just feel that I would be not doing my duty unless I did also concur.
Mr. Chair. I feel exactly the same way as Commissioner Anderson. I only had one of my constituents that contacted me that did not want it to be approved. Every other one that I that I heard from, which was on quite a number of them, was in favor of changing it to being an appointed position. And I agreed with those people. I think it's odd that we would have an elected position of someone that is in charge of our elections. If you think about it, that the auditor treasurer is in charge of our elections, but having that person be an elected position seems odd to me. It's like the fox watching the hen house. And and so I don't think it's right and to keep it this way as because of that, as well as you know, this is different than elected sheriff or the elected county attorney. There there the state statutes don't require any qualifications. So if we have some, you know, if it becomes an open seat when our current auditor treasurer decides not to run again, we could, you know, anybody, I could even apply for it, or somebody with no qualifications could apply for that position and potentially win a popularity contest and and end up as a person in charge of a, you know, close to ninety million dollar budget as well as in charge of our elections. And and that's I just don't don't think that's in the best interests of our of our constituents. So I'm voting with my constituents and and support this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, unlike Commissioner Olson, this was not easy for me. It's not a it's not a slam dunk. It's, I believe, it's my opinion that the legislature kept it very gray. They could have put this forward to us to say that the elected position needs to have qualifications and requirements. I also believe that what's happening is that a board of five elected county commissioners is being asked to make a policy to make a position appointed. It's to me, it 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 doesn't work, and you can already note that I I don't support this because of that idea that it's a board that's going to appoint someone that would then be responsible for elections. So it it hasn't been a problem in the past. We've always relied on our voters to elect this position and make sure that there is a responsible person in the auditor treasurer role. So I I can't support moving it there. This can always be brought back again with another board or at another time, but I I won't support it at this time. So that's that's my explanation is I really feel it's a board making a decision to allow a board to appoint somebody. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lukic. And, you know, for myself, I mean, it wasn't an easy decision. I mean, it's been a long two weeks. And, you know, and and over the the past two weeks, you know, I've I've had probably similar phone calls, text messages, emails, and but I also had a lot of concerns from, you know, my constituents in District Four. And it's hard for me to to support this decision tonight. And I don't take it lightly. You know, I honestly believe that you know, the auditor treasurer position is an important position that our citizens should have the ability to pick and choose who their auditor treasurer is, whether they feel like they're not qualified or not. And to be honest, there's not much qualifications to be county commissioner. So you know, if we're worried about some some unqualified person to seek these positions, then maybe I'm not the person, you know, for the job based on qualifications. But I'm here and I I this isn't a position, this isn't something I can support tonight. You know, there was mention about auditor treasurer, you know, overseeing elections. And that an elected position should not be overseen elected position or elections. But I guess so could the case be said for the Secretary of State, who was in the elected position, who oversees elections. So there, you know, to me, it just seems like there's more concerns with the qualifications for the position. And maybe AMC can go back and and work on trying to fix the qualifications for for these elected positions. There was comments about the recorder and the highway engineer which are appointed, which were once elected. But I believe as the CFO of of the county, it should be an elected. That way people can hold this person accountable, not just five guys that sit up here. I think this position here is far too important just for for us to to make that decision. So.
So, Mr. Chair, I would just ask the rhetorical question then, are we, should we look at returning the recorder position to an elected? You know, I I mean, I'm just wondering if you have the same, was there the same umbrage back when that when that was put into a
Commissioner Olson, I wasn't at on on the board at that time.
No, I'm not.
And I probably wouldn't support it.
Well, we can, we can go back and change that, too. I mean, if that's such an important thing, let's let's have it on our work session at some future work session to talk about whether or not we should make the recorder an elected position again, so that we can make sure that we're being consistent.
I'm I'm fine with that. Commissioner Gosbick?
I just lost my train thought there after Commissioner Olson said that. But what you were saying about the the position, you know.
If we if we have an elected position, so say we get somebody that runs for office and gets elected and is not qualified and does not have is not doing a good job. I don't believe we have any way of removing that person from office. They are in that position for four years as an on the job training flunky possibly. And that's a pretty big position with a lot of responsibility to have somebody in that might not do a very very good job with running of our finances and or our elections. So I just respectfully disagree with you and Commissioner Lukic.
If there are no further questions or comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And it's my understanding that this motion need to have a super majority of four to one. So this motion has failed with a three two vote. Thank you. We'll continue on with our meeting. Item ten, highway department lease to owner to own snow blower.
I was up so quick. Again, Bruce Hasberg and the County Engineer Public Works Director. The item I have for the board is I am requesting permission to purchase a piece of equipment that was not approved in the budget for twenty twenty two. So this is needing for approval since it wasn't in budget. The item is a snow blower. This is a self contained unit, has its own engine, sits on front of a front end motor. And we would be using it for clearing streets, urban streets. Pull the snow in from the banks. Find out how much snow we get, and then we truck it during haul away. Currently, we are using a snow blower that sits on a tractor. You got to take the P T O from the back, take it all the way to the front. And so it is a, you know, it's not a residential, but it's more of a commercial sized snow blower. But we are in need of upgrading our unit. And so this is, I guess, the reason for the request is to upgrade the unit that we've got. The one we've got, again, is kind of getting to the end of its life. And so, sorry. Did the research on the equipment. The city of Bemidji does have one of these. They actually have two of these self contained units, older model, and then the snore model. It's working well for them. Increases the efficiency or capacity that they can remove the snow. What I am proposing is not an outright purchase, but at least spread the purchase over time. That helps fit it into this year's budget. We do have a fifty thousand dollars of miscellaneous for smaller items. And that lease amount can fall within that. So we won't be going over budget. We can fit it in this year's budget. Then in future years or future budgets, either do the same or move equipment around and do an outright complete purchase if that fits by moving equipment around. But for this year and even future years, if need be, it would fall underneath that. So it'd be a five, it would be a one, the first payment plus five more years. And I think that's all I have for information on that.
Mr. Chair.
Why? Why is this one brought its head to the top, Bruce? Don't don't we usually have a capital improvement plan and a and all of that? Why is this one special?
Short answer, didn't plan far enough ahead. We have had issues.
So it's snowing and you got to buy a snow blower.
No, it's more of is the the use or the wear on the one that we've got. And for example, I just, we were using it last week, it broke down. And, you know, it takes, it took a week to get parts. They just got it up and going here yesterday.
And final question, which is always the question, budget? Where does it fit? Where does it fall? Do we have to take something out of somewhere, out of a contingency fund, out of a general fund?
No, it would fit in the budget that we've got. Again, we have a capital improvement budget with the there's a fifty thousand dollars of miscellaneous.
A floater.
A floater.
Okay.
And so the lease payment would come out of that.
So you're asking to plug it into that contingency amount that's approved by budget?
Yep.
Okay, that's.
Budget wasn't, budget doesn't have to change.
But that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, with the, was it thirty-five thousand a year for five years? Is that what the dollar amount was?
Correct. Well, it's initial payment plus five.
Yeah.
Initial plus five.
Thirty-five plus the five years of thirty-five thousand? The total, total bill is.
Two hundred. Yeah, it's a two hundred thousand, roughly two hundred thousand dollar unit.
It's a good snow blower.
Yeah.
How many miles of city streets do we actually have to use that as a thing?
I, off the top of my head, I don't know, but again, the big ones for us, Irvin, Roosevelt, Lake, Bemidji Avenue are the big ones here in Bemidji. Kelly or Black Duck each have some. And then bridges. We travel around and clean off our bridges.
But it's not just a small section of Lake Avenue or something. It's several, several places and several uses.
Yeah, we have Bemidji Avenue going south from like the old Coke facility there and then also north from what CVS going out of town. Yeah, we've taken over, we have quite a few miles of urban streets and there's not a lot of right of way to push the snow into the, you know, off those urban streets, but.
Thank you.
I'd move that we approve the lease to own.
I second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Lukic, second by Commissioner Anderson to approve the highway snow blower. Any further discussion? Now the call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Item eleven, resolution for DNR review of proposed tax forfeit land sale parcel.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. I want to bring your attention that this was on those table two weeks ago at the meeting because you kind of wanted to have the discussion that we had earlier today at the work session. And I understand completely why you did that and I guess what I would suggest and on any of these land projects, I, I don't know if I really emphasize this enough. The county board can stop anything at any time. So even if we do go, and that's what I'm going to recommend, is having this sent to the DNR. Have them review it and we can kind of start through the process, but then this will go to the land review committee this late summer and fall to decide what we want to do with it because just because it goes to DNR and like I said, anytime during the process, we can just quit doing whatever we're doing here, change course or, or stop it. But that's why I guess at this stage of the game, at least to keep this moving until it goes to the land review committee, I would recommend to, to pass it tonight.
Mr. Chair, I think that makes sense. And so I'll, I'll move the resolution for the DNR review of proposed tax forfeited land sale parcel.
We have a motion by Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion? Now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion.
Aye. I'm opposed to.
Pose. Motion carried for one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Alright, so that will conclude our, our regular agenda. Onto Commissioners' business legislative lobbying issues. Commissioner Lukic?
I'll carry my legislative and the Commissioners' reports all in one. I'm good tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay.
I agree. Same here.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Yep, I'm in the same, same boat.
Commissioner Gosbick?
I actually had quite a few things. I'll, I'll try to keep it short here. Had our first jail finance committee meeting and looking forward to getting that rolling and I was also on a HRDC Headwaters Regional Development Commission. For those on, online that might not know what that is, hiring committee yesterday and we're hopefully gonna get an offer accepted for a new executive director position for that organization. Had a, as I mentioned earlier, the Mississippi Headwaters Board wanting to bring forth the issue about the north end of Lake Bemidji and the possibilities there for sewer and water to be extended. Black Duck Ambulance Strength Powers Board elected me as their chair at the last meeting and that's about it. Thank you.
They're looking for shorter meetings, huh?
Thank you, Commissioner Gosbick. As for myself, I know legislative lobbying Commissioners, I'll be out attending the AMC Tribal Colony Relations Training the next few days. Other than that, that is it and thank the audience for, for being here tonight and review the upcoming meeting schedule at your leisure. My motion to adjourn.
To move.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Olson. And for the discussion, if not, a call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Five vote.